For our March meeting, before we move into items for discussion, I'm going to ask the mayor, Mark Atkins, to do our prayer. And Kathy Farrell, will you lead us in our pledge?
I'll lead.
Great. You'll stand with us, please.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you today just with grateful hearts for just the day you've given us today, Father, and just continue to bless us as you always do. Lord, we ask that you continue to watch over those that serve our community here, those that are employees of our town, those that serve in the Fire and Police Department. We pray for a hedge of protection and safety around those people. Lord bless us all and continue to give us guidance and the ability to do the town's business as a council. We go to you now. We thank you for everything that you give and do. Father, we say a special prayer for the viruses that are around the world, Father, that are worrying people, this coronavirus. Father, we just pray that you'll get your hands around that and watch over us all and protect us all. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark? Kathy? We'll move into our items for discussion. First item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 28E Group A Parcel 16.00 to go from R5 to PRD, as well as Tax Map 28E Group A part of Parcels 18.00 and 19.00 and Tax Map 28 Parcel 33.00 from R4 to PRD requested by Joe Epps. The property contains 21.95 acres and are located on Rock Springs Road. This is a second reading. Kevin?
This is Mayor and Council. There are no changes to this since you looked at this on first reading. This is a PRD request for 169 units on Rock Springs Road, 21.95 acres. I invite you to review this and direct an approval with authority.
Questions for Kevin or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 54 Parcels 14.01 and 14.02 containing approximately 19.47 acres. It's requested by Sean Collins to go from R3 to PRD. The properties are located on Morton Lane. That is a second reading. Kevin?
This is Mayor and Council. Again, there are no changes to this since you looked at it on first reading. This is just two separate parcels that would be filled together. The proposed PRD is for a 38 lot, zero outline development. So you have two units per lot. There's also an existing single-family residence with wood remains for a total of 77 residences. I invite you to review this and direct an approval with authority.
Questions for Kevin on this or comments? Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title II Boards and Commissions, et cetera, Chapter 8 Mandatory Attendance Sections 8-101 Scope and 8-102 Attendance, and this is a second reading.
Mayor and Council, as you stated, this is a second reading. I feel like we've kind of hashed this out pretty well already, but so there's not been any change. This will enact mandatory attendance for these quasi judicial boards so that the town can operate and be able to issue permits and those types of things whenever applicants, citizens, and businesses come before the body. If they miss more than three, on the fourth time, the person's automatically removed.
Just to have some discussion with the council, I did have somebody ask me if it's important for those boards, why are we not just doing it for every board? And so I kind of wanted to have that discussion with you all.
I think the biggest part of the initial conversation was because we had, you know, planning and voting and a quorum was necessary and so forth to do those things. But I guess we could do it either way. I mean, boards are boards and service is service.
Yeah, it was my understanding that those were the judicial boards, so they have kind of binding agreements that they can set and the other boards don't. So that was kind of, it's not that one board's more important than the other, but it has a little bit more of a, it puts the town in a binding agreement where some of the other boards do not.
And I agree with that.
And that was the reason that we didn't include the other boards.
Right. But I guess my question is, do we want to...
I don't know that it hurts to include the others.
Well, I know that some meet, like, these boards meet once a month, and there's some of the boards, like Sister City, that may have four or five a month.
Right now, we're meeting twice a month now just because of what's going on.
Twice a night?
Oh. Twice a month. Yeah, twice a month.
I mean, I'm sure you could put some language in there that they have their one month, their one regularly called meeting, as long as they're attending that regularly called. I wouldn't expect, when I was on Sister City Committee, I couldn't make all of the meetings sometimes because there were several a month. And that really isn't necessarily what you think you're signing up for when you sign up for a once a board, once a month meeting. So seems like you could put some language in there that says, you know, the regularly called meetings or the regularly scheduled meetings, and then the addendums or the extra ones are kind of extra. And I don't think they should account against somebody because they're kind of above what they agreed to.
And I'm not saying that we have to. I just wanted to have some discussion. I mean, once the person asks me, you know, I don't disagree. I know why we did what we did because we needed to make sure that those other boards did have a quorum, but I don't know. I mean, one of the boards is your boards with Arts Commission, oh, and the charity assistance. How do you feel? Sorry, I didn't mean to jumpstart. No worries.
I thought she was going to say, "I feel good."
I understand why we needed to do that as well. And as I'm thinking through, for instance, like the charity assistance, the bulk of the issues that we addressed are in the fall of each year, and so we actually don't have meetings every single month. Like, we don't need to meet in January. We'll meet this month. So I don't know how that would affect, and if you have to start manipulating the language to be able to fit the boards that don't necessarily meet on that consistent monthly basis, I don't want that to become an issue as well.
I mean, I think I could put regularly scheduled meetings for all boards if that's what the council would like. Keep in mind, there is a mechanism always to remove someone, and the bylaws will have that as well. This was just an automatic versus someone having to take action. But obviously, to council's will, I can make it general to all boards for regular, no more than three regularly scheduled meetings if you'd like. It's not a problem at all.
Jerry, how do you feel in regards to Sister City? If it was done just for the...
I really would like us not to set it at three. I really would. I just, I know we've got certain committees that need to be there, but people wouldn't know that ahead of time. Sometimes it's hard to get people on these committees, and if we're going to say, "Okay, you missed three, you can't be on there anymore," then we've got to go back and we've got to find somebody else. Because there's certain things that come up. I mean, we've got some that's going through some health issues right now with family members. It makes it tough.
Yeah.
And, you know, you know that they're going to be there when they could be there.
Yeah.
So, you know, personally, I like it the way we've got it right now with those. That's just my personal opinion.
Okay. Anybody else? So we just want to leave it as is?
I'm okay, either way.
I am too. I mean, this is sort of a trial run to find out how it's going to work, and this would be a good way to find out.
I see Jerry's point. We could also be adding quite a bit more burden on our staff and us if some of those other boards that, I don't really know how it would affect them. We didn't really look at them. We looked at the ones we added it to, but it could affect some of them.
So what if we move forward with what we're doing but monitor attendance on the other boards to see if it's an issue going forward? You all still go with that? Okay. Perfect. Okay, we'll move on to item four, approval of terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a development agreement with Suncrest Real Estate and Land relative to road impact fee offsets for the Gwyn Farms Development.
We are working through it. There is one issue in our, in item seven that we're still negotiating, kind of working through with the developer on. For the most part, we have an agreement ready to go, and that is that one. So we would ask that you put this on the agenda with the idea that we will be coming back to you this year. One of the changes before, and it'll be if your council back it to practice, but we are working through with them, this with their developer and their companies to finalize that.
And I'd like to say, Kevin and I spoke with the developer, or the developer's representative today. We each understand what we're trying to achieve in language, did not feel there was any pushback for what we were trying to do. I think it's more about now getting the two attorneys to agree on some language in that one section, and we can move forward. I feel very confident that we can have this by council meeting hammered out and ready to go. So we just ask, leave it on there, knowing that we're working on it. If we have to, we can pull it before the next meeting if need be, but I feel very confident we can resolve this issue.
If we get it between now and before the packet's...
We will get it to you.
We'll go ahead and get to it.
We'll get it to you. Yes.
You said that was Section 7?
It was Section 7. The only issue is about assignment and whether the town gives consent or doesn't have the ability to give consent, so that's what we're...
Yeah, I read it, and I was kind of thinking, well, it seems a little one-sided there, but I just wanted to carry it so when the new one comes out, I know where to look.
Yeah, that's the only thing that we're, at this point, that's the only issue. And like I said, we had good conversation. We understand why they want what they want. They understand why we want.
Right.
I think it's just finding some, and I think between our two attorneys, we can get the language resolved.
Is there any other kind of development changes we need to be looking at for that at all, or is this basically assignments?
It's just the assignments.
Okay. Item five, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Sessions Paving relative to the intersection improvements on Montgomery Way at Lee Road.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Oh, sorry.
As you may know, we've had some issues at the intersection of Montgomery Way and the road as far as the state water on there should create sometimes. Also, there's some issues with the rabies on Montgomery Way. Some people, large peoples, may have to turn when they turn from Lee Road on to Montgomery Way, spilling out of the walk and the traffic. What we're going to do with this project is widen out that rabies and also fix some drainage issues to allow a little more crosswalk and walk and runoff. We're going to have to bid about, on the bill on this project, we did receive one bid from Sessions Paving at $20,320. We're asking for approval for Sessions Paving to do this.
Questions for Tom on this?
One other question, just kind of related, I think. Montgomery Way, I think, was the place, the road where we were looking at putting in speed humps or testing speed humps? Is that part of this, or is that separate?
It is separate. We do have those order additions coming in March, and we'll be sold before we have to.
We use that as a kind of test to see if that does help with controlling some of the speed on traffic. We have some other places that we would look at once we determine it's effective.
Got you. I'm a little bit spooked because I had just written down traffic calming, so we're obviously thinking, like, that's a little scary.
Yeah. Well, traffic control was actually listed in there, and that's why I wasn't sure if that was what it was talking about.
That's been an ongoing thing.
Yeah. Okay. Item six, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Air Gas USA LLC relative to the lease of gas cylinders for oxygen, argon, and acetylene.
Acetylene.
Acetylene. And I even called you about that last night.
Okay.
Acetylene for welding and torch cutting.
I think he's got it wrong. I think you have it right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Basically, we're going to be leasing some tanks for oxygen, argon, acetylene. Basically, these chemicals are used for either torch cutting with torches metal, cutting through metal, or welding for the on-service vehicles to go out to different job sites to be able to do that work.
I don't remember that one in science.
Yeah.
It's not on the tables, I don't think.
Is it? I'm not sure it is.
Most, probably most custom automotive shops use this quite a bit. I have an acetylene tank. I have a torch at my house, so...
Is that legal?
It is. It comes...
The acetylene or the torch?
He is silent.
Item seven, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Morton Building Incorporated relative to in addition to the park's equipment shed. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Council, this was bid back in October, and the town received one bid from Morton Buildings Inc. They're actually the people that built our last tractor shed, and they were supposed to be adding on a bay on each end. It is in the capital equipment budget for parks. It did come in over, but we're going to absorb that in some other areas in our budget. And they did drop it down over $1,000 from $50,351 to $49,137. So after those proceeded, the timeline's about 120 workin' days. We just asked for approval of this contract.
Questions for Mike on this?
Why'd they drop the price?
I ask them.
Thank you.
Do we need to ask them again?
I think I've worked on that. I just felt like we would be better ring them there, and sometimes you just got to ask, and that's what happened. It's not what we were talking about, but it is what happened. So we'll work out what...
Is this all new, or is this, is this for any of the material that came from the old town, is that the...
No, this will be all new. And they, actually, that shed is not that old. It was, the old one got, well, it was in straight line wind, so that's why we've got a new one to attach to it for our year.
Other questions for Mike? Okay, we will move on to item eight, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with blank relative to the mowing of park properties.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize for not having a recommendation yet, but this is one of our bigger bids in the Parks and Recreation Department. It used to be fairly small, but it is grown, a lot of the properties we now have, and a lot of the properties have a lot more items and facilities in them. So we bid this out with four companies submitting on a bid up, it was on February 18th of 2020. We're looking at the low bid, starting there, and the pictures of their shop and their equipment, just to make sure that they can handle the job, and we are checking their references. And right now, GADCO is the low bid on the base bid, and they do some, we have some county Parks and Recreation Departments, and they also do some of the Rutland County Schools. So we have talked with them. We do want to do a little bit more research before we recommend that, if that's okay with the council.
There's a big difference in some of that, isn't there?
It is. I think one of them was way out of line, but maybe, you know, maybe it's what they're used to.
Yeah.
They don't have the equipment, they just put it in there.
Yeah.
One thing I did, after looking at these again, you know, it might be a chance we split this bid up a little bit, the optional properties, because Barton Law Care is, you know, they handle the other properties right now. So if they're going to be in town, the optional properties we had, they were $400 lower per mowing, so it might be a chance we recommend splitting that, just to get the best price that we can. And there is kind of a fee part to this. I want to let the council know if it's okay with Mayor and Council. We do need to renew the non-park properties that was bid out in 2018. We just didn't get a council packet, but we ask approval, offering that, I'll put it in a council packet for renewal for another two years. We didn't have to rebid it, just we did it in, and that would be water treatment plants, cemeteries, some of those. That is Barton Law Care, who passed that right now.
Questions for Mike?
Mike, I was actually going to ask you about, was it, was the bids for each individual one, or was it one full bid? And you said you're thinking about maybe breaking it up some. Have you done that in the past?
We have a little bit. We're trying to keep the base bid to one group where we can kind of hold them accountable. But there has been times, or times when something was really high, we would give it to another company, and the bid states that we have that option to do that. So I would want it to be clean if we do that and not be where it affects the bid results.
Do they ever subcontract it?
Every now and then, but most time, they do most of it themselves. If they get behind, some of those subcontract it, but it's been rare.
Other questions for Mike? Okay, we will put that on the agenda and move on to item nine, for approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Betty Brin Children's Museum relative to the Adventures of Mr. Potato Head exhibit.
Yes, ma'am. Glad you get to say that. The SOAC staff, they have to work months ahead, sometimes maybe up to a year to get in line for these exhibits, so that's why you got a couple of them of you tonight. They coordinated the second part of this exhibit. The first part was very popular for the visitors, and the second part exhibit is seeing space. And all these have educational and entertainment value, so we're just asking for approval to sign a contract with Betty Brin. We've used him in the past, so we're used to that. And the cost for this will be $30,000 for three months, which is kind of the normal price for those, depending on the size of the exhibit. It was very popular and feel like it'll be popular again.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, we will put that on the agenda. Item 10 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Betty Brin Children's Museum relative to the Harley-Davidson exhibit.
Yes, ma'am. We've been trying to get on the list for this exhibit for several months, and when we first opened the SOAC, this was one of them that we were looking at. So we've kind of gotten on the list for that, and we would like to grant this one for six months. It's pretty in-depth, so it's a lot of breakdown and all that type of thing when they're shipping it. So we would have this from November 14th to, and 2020 to May 3rd of '21, which our staff appreciate that because we're the ones that have to break that down and ship it out. But we feel like this is a very popular exhibit, and it's in the price range that we were wanting, like, the other ones, $30,000 for three months. And they did take off $10,000 off that rental, the overall rental, because we're going to keep it for that six-month period.
Questions for Mike?
Is this on this year's budget or next year's budget?
Yeah, this one, we'll pay a little bit on this year's deposit, and then it'll be on next year's budget. Yes, sir.
Okay. For Mark's benefit, is this interactive for children and for adults?
I'll say yes, ma'am. But we have been looking at this one for a while, so we're excited about getting this one.
We've got a Tokyo Harley-Davidson shirt we can wear down there.
Yeah, I can roll one in for 60 grand. I mean...
Okay, other questions? Okay, we will put that on the agenda. Item 11 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute addendum number two with Barge Solutions relative to the Construction Administration and Construction Engineering Services for the Nolan Drive Relocation Project.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. As y'all know, we shut down the project through the winter, and I don't think it's been dry since. But that being said, they were on 204 out of 210-day timeframe, so with the project, you know, in working days, they have 24 days left on that project, so we knew that we needed to see how to cover that time span. Of course, Barge Solutions has been the inspection of the job at half-day rates, and so I went to them and asked them to give us a not exceed cost for the remainder of that project to inspect and watch over that project and watch over invoices and that type of thing. So hopefully, we'll get some good weather here pretty soon, and we'll knock that out. We're just asking for approval of this amendment to the legal contract.
Questions for Mike on this? So this is just a 30-day extension?
Yes, ma'am. Basically, it's 30 days just because of the project itself. The construction contract has about that many days left in it, so...
That's what we're...
That would be working days, obviously. If it goes beyond that, if we're either, if it's under $10,000, we can handle it here in-house, if not, we'd have to come back to Town Council. We don't want that, but we did discuss that.
Okay.
And they're scheduled, weather permitting, to be, you know, we're going to be looking, coming back in there on March 16th. I think that's a Monday, at least to evaluate if it's good enough, you know, ground to work on.
Other questions? Okay, we will move on to item 12, which is consideration of resolution to request unclaimed balance of accounts remitted to the State Treasurer under Unclaimed Property Act.
Right here.
Oh, there you are.
Mayor and Council.
There's so many of you now. Hard to find you.
We got an L shade table.
I know.
Passing this resolution allows a town to ask the state of Tennessee for a refund. This property is made up of outstanding checks or credit balances on closed utility accounts and vendor accounts that were first held by the town, and secondly, by the state of Tennessee. We ask that the council pass this resolution.
Questions for Rex? Okay, we'll move on to item 13, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with blank relative to the installation of towers at the gas regulator stations. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. The next three items all deal with the Itron system, so I'll give you a brief explanation here. When we changed from the Open Way Riva system to the Choice Connect, it changed the game a little bit as far as connectivity goes with the system itself. So more of the CCUs had to be added, which Itron does cover under their agreement. But within that agreement, it's in the contract that the town, if we had to install a pole or a skated tower to put these things on, and remember with these CCUs, height and location is king. So we need to be about 45 feet high for most of these, and you can't be too far apart or they won't communicate with each other. So all that being said, on item 13, I have spoken with Itron. We are working on getting prices for these. Some of these may be, end up being power poles instead of towers because of the expense. What Itron has agreed to do is pay for the installation, and then we would reimburse them through a change order in the project. So I would ask that we remove item 13 from the agenda.
Okay. We will remove that item. Item 14, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a joint use agreement with Middle Tennessee Electric relative to the Itron meter reading system.
Yes, ma'am. Again, this is part of the agreement. Now, with Middle Tennessee Electric, on the agenda summary, it said on nine poles, but there's actually 14. So where these go is on the arms of the streetlights. Middle Tennessee would actually install these because we can't, they won't let us install anything on their facilities due to safety, but they will be installing these, and this will give us the agreement we need with them to move forward.
Okay. Questions for Mike on this? Okay, item 15, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an amendment to the Laverne Interlocal Agreement relative to adding sites for the gas AMI connected grid routers.
Yes, so we had an original agreement that the council approved with Laverne. So when we went with the other system and they redid the propagation study, it changed the three locations. So the original three locations, Ben Hill Water Tank, Waldron Center Point Traffic Light, and Murphysboro Road Traffic Light would come off, and we would add three different locations in its place to replace that.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, we'll move on to item 16, which is approval of the changes to Smyrna Police Department Towing Manual. Jeff, are you taking this?
I'll start us off. As you know, we've had several questions about our towing manual since we made the changes a couple of months ago, and we've sent a rough draft to each of you to make comments. We have those comments in. The chief also sent us some comments. We should have the final draft ready to send by council meeting, but basically, we're redoing some of the towing manual to allow some open competition for towing events. We're not going to limit it to the two. We also are making some changes on the lots as far as location of lots. One of the things you'll be hearing is, Kevin is prepared to take to the Planning Commission, we're going to be asking for tow lots going forward to be allowed in an industrial zoning. They still have to meet the criteria of fencing for security, those kind of things, and then anything within the zoning of the industrial zoning, whether it's light industrial all the way up to heavy industrial. Now, this is not junkyards. This is towing lots only, and there is, and we are going to clarify what that communication is as we go forward. So we'll be bringing all of those final recommendations in a new tow manual, and then we'll be looking to open that towing manual up to other folks in our community that would like to bid. Now, just because you bid does not mean you're going to come on the system. There are going to be criteria. They're welcome to call the town manager's office or the chief of police, and we'll have that tow manual available for them to look at once it's approved by the council through this process.
Okay.
One question I saw, and one of the things you didn't mention that's being added is the conversation around applications are only being accepted one month out of the year, basically.
We will, yes. We will, yes.
I didn't see any language in there, and we talked about it, but, so I don't know if you just chose not to include it or it was an oversight. You may have just said, I don't want to put it in there. But I didn't see any language about if they don't pass the initial inspection, do they have a certain period of time to, to meet that requirement? Do they have to automatically wait 12 more months to reapply?
They have 30 days from the time that they apply. We'll inspect, we'll give them any deficiencies. If there are minor deficiencies and could be, you know, fixed within that timeframe, then that opportunity presents itself. If it's a major infraction, then it's going to be a year rollover. They would, they would have to stay off for a year.
So it's 30 days from when they submit the application?
We will let them know within 30 days whether or not they would, would meet the criteria.
Is that in here? I don't remember, maybe that was.
It's in there. It, the part he's talking about is with the window of.
Right, the application, how, when it, they can be turned in, but I just didn't remember the 30 days in there.
Well, I think he's counting the first through the 30th, but I think your question is, if someone comes in and they apply as they're supposed to be, and then it's inspected, and they fail, do we want to give them 30 days to become compliant instead of having to wait another year, is what you're asking?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, based on what you said, Brian, it sounds like we could, we could wait till the 29th to do an inspection, and now they have one day to fix it.
No, we're going to give them, we're going to give them a sufficient amount of time to, to any minor infractions. But if it's a major infraction, then they will have to wait for a year.
Okay, are, are those defined somewhere, minor versus major?
It'll be something we will be working on.
I'm just trying to take subjectivity out of it. One of the problems and complaints that we've had about this for years is that it's subjective, that it's up to the, you know, the person doing the inspection, or whether or not they like me and all that mess that we've heard.
We're, we're going to eliminate those problems, I promise you.
I want all subjectivity taken out so that it's black and white, and it's there.
We will give a sufficient amount of time to correct. We'll put that in the verbiage. We'll, we'll make that change. But if it's, I mean, if they don't have fencing up, or they don't have security systems, if they can get that repaired within a two-week period or something like that from the time that we tell them, that's one thing. But if it's going to be, you know, three months to get something done, then they're going to have to wait until the next year.
Yeah, I completely understand. And I, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear about what the requirements are, and if we're going to say they have 30 days, I think it needs to be written so that we don't have one person we give two weeks to and another person we give one week.
We, we'll, we'll work on that language.
Just take all of the subjectiveness out of it.
We will work on that language. It's a good catch.
And I, I do appreciate you guys bringing this back. You know, the first time we looked at this a few months ago, we dropped it down to two based on some erroneous information that we, that we got. So I appreciate you guys looking at that and bringing it back, and let's kind of correct or fix the whole manual now and not just, you know, take care of one little incident or one little issue that may have seen.
No, there's major changes in the overall manuals.
I actually looked at the chief's draft just before, and some of the things he's recommended taking out, I think, make a lot of sense, too, so.
Well, and all of you have given us insight, and I appreciate that. Some of you have called me, some of you have sent emails. Chief sent some stuff this afternoon. And I know there was some pretty blatant, like, two paragraphs that, but what was happening is everybody was putting stuff in, and it was a very rough draft, but I think at the end of the day, we'll have a good draft available for you by council meeting, and we'll have everything taken care of.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Is the towing lot required to have a secondary area inside of it? Or, I mean, it refers to town vehicles which are possibly involved in a ongoing investigation?
Those typically get towed to our lot. If it's an investigation, it comes here.
I don't think it actually says that.
Because it says you had to have a secure, a secure location.
Yeah, but those, most of those are in.
That's so people can't break into your car.
Yeah, that, that generally.
No, but it said, it says, and it says a secure, a separate secure area in there, within their towing lot.
I, I do believe what Brian's saying is accurate. I know that when my dad was on call for the city, vehicles placed on hold for an investigation, generally.
They come here.
If you knew it at the time of tow, they came here. The issue is, is sometimes they make it to the tow lot before the decision to put a hold on it actually happens. So they don't always know there's going to be a hold just when they pick up the car. Sometimes the investigation the officer then does for the next day or two results in a hold. And in that case, that's what it's talking about. We were not required at that time to have a secure, a separate area, but the whole area had to be secured. And we did separate those cars manually, as in, they would be in one part of the lot to keep people just walking around them.
But it doesn't say that in the manual.
It does not say it, and we were not required to at the time. I don't know if you want to add that or not.
So we need a clarification to make sure that we know. I don't know when an investigation.
We'll, we'll work with the chief to make sure the verbiage is correct on that, but.
The other option is you could have the tow companies move a whole vehicle to the city lot.
That's what they do now, so.
After the fact, I'm saying. If it's on their lot and a hold gets placed, then you got to move it. That's an extra tow on them, but it is what it is. It doesn't happen that often. It's not.
And usually, we pay them.
Right, you, yeah, right. They, they are allowed to bill the city for a certain rate.
Just so you all know, I talked to Jeff before the meeting, just a couple of things. That very first sentence, I understand where we're going with it, but I think it can either, I, I think it's just to be said in a different way that's maybe not as. That the rotation is a privilege, not a right.
In different places throughout, it, it states that, and I think that's, that's self-evident, so we can remove that total sentence.
Okay. The other thing was in Part 5, Section A, and I think where we're taking off.
It's the last part of A. The last sentence in A will be removed. It talks about limiting the number of tow companies. 5A.
Yeah. But I don't think it's in this one.
No, you and I just talked about that, that removing that.
Yes, but I'm talking about, but I'm talking about, I don't think it's in the one we're looking at here. It was in the one you sent us.
Oh, you've got the one from the previous.
Right. So the one we have, but in the one Jeff sent us, it had, still had that the town council can limit the number of tow companies that we, and so that'll be gone, right?
That's being removed.
So.
Yeah, it's actually, that's, at the end of A, it's still on the one I've got.
Is it?
Yeah, it says, "The town council finds that limiting the number of towing companies appearing on the rotation list to be of its interest."
Yes, there is.
There's about three different versions. That's why I'm saying we'll have the clean version.
Okay.
Been a lot of cooks in the kitchen.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments on this? Okay.
That'll take two readings on that, so we've got another month to kick it around after you give us the cleaned-up copy, right?
Well, this is just a policy, so it's only one reading.
Oh.
When will we, when do you expect, knowing how much you've got to do in regards to this, that we might get it?
My goal would be to have it to you by Monday, if not over the weekend. That's my goal. So for sure, by Tuesday. I don't, I don't want you to have it the night of council, so I want you to have a good.
I don't think any of us would be comfortable with that.
A good week.
Can I make one request? Can you turn on tracking in the document so we can see what changes you make?
Yes.
So we don't have to go read the whole 20-page document? We can just go.
And all of our documents are tracked that way. It's just.
Yeah, it's just what we're getting.
The mad, the madness that it would be on yours would probably.
Even if you start with a clean disc copy and only track the current changes.
Sure, we'll track from this one.
Yeah, I don't need history in, you know, in forever, just.
Sure, we'll track current.
It just makes it a lot easier for us to review it and not have to read the whole thing looking for it.
We can make that happen.
Okay. Item 17, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Larry Tolbert Esquire relative to acquisition services for the Olive Branch Sewer Extension Project. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor, Council. As you recall, similar type agreement with the Stormwater Project. This is, do the title opinions, settlements, statements, et cetera. We've had good luck with Mr. Tolbert on doing all of our work in this area when it comes to the closing. So obviously, we handle up to that point, and then Tolbert handles that end of it. We would just ask that you approve the agreement.
Questions for Jeff on this?
We're looking at 72 parcels, is that correct?
I believe that's correct, but I'll have to look.
It's on the Olive Branch.
Yeah.
I think I tried to see, we have so many.
That's what's listed on the table, 72.
Yeah, that's what's in there. I just don't have it pulled up on, on the acquisition table.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll move on to item 18, which is consideration of appointments to boards and committees. If you are a resident of the town of Smyrna and are interested in serving on a board or a committee, we highly recommend that you go online and apply, or you can do that in-person here at the town hall will get you an application. I would ask that if you are a department head that is over a board, and we don't know if someone that is rolling off, that does have an opportunity to come back on, whether they're seeking appointment or not, if you can try to find that out and encourage them to reapply if that's what they choose, that would be very helpful to us. Okay. Other comments about boards and committees, anybody? Under other, we have two items. The first is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with MG Group PC relative to hotel motel audit. Rex?
Mayor, Council, the CPA firm of MG Group PC has submitted an engagement letter to audit the hotels and motels in the town of Smyrna. This is a compliance audit to verify proper reporting and payment of occupancy tax. The contract for the audit is for $640 per hotel motel or campground, and $320 for bed and breakfast in dwellings with fewer than four rooms. We estimate the audit to run about $10,240. The engagement letter does outline fees for additional services outside of the audit. The audit will cover the period from November of 2017 to March 2020. And I have also provided a list of the hotels and motels that will be audited. They will also be actively looking for Airbnbs in the town.
Questions for Rex on this? Okay, item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Agenda Quick Software relative to the agenda management for meetings. Oh, Jeff?
Yes, Mayor, Council, and Brian may have some to add, but for several years, I've been wanting us to head towards the direction of Agenda Software. One, for, I believe it'll be a great advantage to Ms. Diane in her job, but also it contains all the meeting minutes, everything in one software package, as well as there's a chronological order that when someone submits something to be on the agenda, to ensure that, okay, it goes to that director, or then it goes to the attorney before it goes to the town manager, to put on the agenda so that everyone's signing off on it before that it gets to you. Currently, we, we use Word and those types of documents, but this would be basically a computer-assisted, pushing it through the system with, with some failsafes. And also, there's a lot of other bells and whistles with this, but it's, it's a great price. It's under $10,000. And Todd has worked very hard with his, his folks, sat through, I guess, several presentations I was gone that day, but, but, and Agenda Quick, which Brentwood utilizes, and they're also a local company, appeared to be the, the best one and the one that, that fit the town the best.
And this was an item that we did budget for in last year's budget, so the dollars are appropriated for that.
Okay. Questions for Jeff or Brian? Okay. We will move on to status reports. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. Very quickly, just so everyone knows, our department has been extremely busy here lately, and I heard detectives made a very, in association with other law enforcement agencies throughout the county, for that matter, throughout the Middle Tennessee area, on the mule kick bandit, who would like to be known as the donkey kick bandit. And I'm not exaggerating on that. But anyway.
Was there a reason?
I don't know.
We've got another name with the name.
Obviously, he has a problem.
He sounds like a donkey. Relevant to donkeys.
And again, I'll offhand decide, this guy did a lot of damage, not only in our city, but in other shoveling. Shovel boy, he did over 18 carpentry in my city. In our city, he did eight. So I'm very proud of our detective division for staying on top of this, and especially the cooperation that has been shown not only to our bunch, but to others from the other law enforcement agencies. And other than that, we have, I think, 28 in our citizens' police academy, which I think is a very good number, like Ms. Kathy's going through it. So we're excited about that.
Great.
That's about all of us.
We're trying to get her a really good ride along.
We will work on that.
Anything for Chief?
Thank you.
Thanks. Hal?
Good evening. We won't be punching doors, but we'll be punching greens Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday starting this week, our annual air, spring airification. Could be pushed off because it, it looks like rain Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but that's our bill. Secondly, starting Monday, our First Tee After School Program registration starts. It will be on Thursdays from 5:00 to 6:30 for the months of April and May, and you can go to firstteetennessee.org to sign up.
Great. Questions for Hal? Thanks. How are you?
Doing well.
Good.
I made it another month.
Another month? That's right.
If it doesn't stop raining, we'll see, but that's our biggest thing out on In Springs West Extension is just the continuous rain out there is holding that project up. But we have got that section from I-24 out to the curve, Long Rocky Fork Road, in Bayside now. We did get Gamble Lane realigned, and it is in base, so right now, we're just waiting till mid-March for the asphalt plants to reopen and get that base layer, and at that time, we can relocate traffic to that section of road, and then we can start taking out the existing. You may see a concrete curve down through there. That's part of the median, so that is one side of the median that would be out there that you're seeing. And at Wildwood Drive, we also got the median replaced there and in place. On the Washington Street at the CSX Railroad, the Broadway Design Plans are completed. We'll be having a Broadway field review on March the 18th, and we'll have the other two consultants on the Lowry Street, and the Zama Park will also be there, so we can coordinate to make sure all three projects come in without overlap. On Jerrison Pipe, was that T-Dot on Tuesday to have the construction field review? That project is slated for a June bid letting, hopefully, June 26th, 2020 bid letting. They're looking at this project to be a two-and-a-half to three-year project. The bridge that goes over the lake, that will be a total replacement, and it's going to be 98 feet wide and 590 feet long, so it's going to be a large structure. So that's going to be the slowest part of it. Utilities will go on the Phase 1 of the bridge once they build that first part of it. They'll get the utilities on that side and try to get those moving before we're taking out the existing bridge and building the other half of the bridge. And also, Sunday, I had the opportunity to attend the Martin Luther King Leadership Academy Career Fair at Patterson Park Community Center. Spoke to about 24 to 30 junior, senior high school students. Engineering was not big on the list, but fortunately Kathy gave me the biggest candy jar at the event, so I did get a few that got to talk to me about that. Really enjoyed meeting the students and talking to them about their future careers.
Great. Questions for Charles?
Yeah, Charles, on the, on the bridge, is the new part going to be on the north side of the existing?
I believe so. Like, so they didn't have the bridge plans there to look at as far as the phasing, but it will be built to one side, and then, once it come in, and remove the other. Because it is going to be five full lanes across with 12-foot shoulders on each side, and then six-foot sidewalks on each side. So it's going to be a massive crossing.
We won't be jumping off that bridge.
Not anymore.
Not anymore, right.
Other questions?
I just want to know if Mark jumped off of the existing.
Well, it wasn't that one.
Okay.
It was fake Santa's.
Yeah, it's down the weekly lane.
When I was younger, a lot younger.
Just last week.
Other questions for Charles? Thanks. I heard you had a productive meeting. I'm sure Brian will talk about that in a minute today at T-Dot, so appreciate you all going down.
All right. Thank you for all that opportunity to go back in and meet with us.
Good.
Saw a lot of old friends.
Good. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. Information Services has been working on a number of projects, we're working on a few internal soccer projects, one is a new utility employee suggestion box, hyper project that we're doing online, and we're about to finish that up. Looks to be, in fact, to be very beneficial for the utilities department. We're working a 15-year-old purchase order program, so we were replacing that and moving along with a, we've got a base system for that, too. Couple of networking projects that are nearing, one is sort of nearing completion, Cedarstone, we're waiting on a move, and they're quickly coming to that, and we'll get that finished up. Another is the I-24 Smart Core project that we have gotten, resubmitted some changed network plans to them, they had some design changes that required us to make some changes to those network plans. Also working on new upgrades to our email and office software, moving along with that. Big project, so we're taking our time with that, and we'll try to get it right without having to redo anything. Also, we do have approval, we've been working with Rutherford County, Murfreesboro, and Laverne on allocating some fiber, I was in GIS fiber that runs between all those agents, all those entities up 40170 here, and we're allocating fiber for Smurfs ITS project, as well as a request for Rutherford County ECD, so they can tie together some of their SAPS for their managing purposes. And that might require, we're not quite sure yet, but that might require adjustment to run in that, to the interlocal agreement that was put in place in 2000. But if that is the case, then we'll run that through at that time.
Great. Questions for Robert?
A lot of technology going in the dirt, isn't it, Robert?
Never ends, always something.
Great, thank you. Todd?
Mayor Counsel, giving an update, we've had 53 open records to replace, some of them was quite extensive. In fact, finished up one today, the two's, got several hours to finish the redaction of. Our court clerks are finished up their data testing and in preparation for the data migration, so that project is well on target, they should actually finish up with their data testing by one week. And in our probation department, they're currently supervising 586 probationers, so they're staying busy.
Questions for Todd? Thanks. Tom?
Counsel, Charles mentioned that the rains are slowing up our projects as well. We have several, several stormwater projects on the ferry, Lawson Road, working through Valley Drive, and Shadowwood that we've postponed, even be pushed back before we get some salt through, so the ground gets a little firmer out there. Also, we've been working on evaluating some of our roadways for upcoming milligan resurfacing next fiscal year and following fiscal year, kind of type of deal. Some of the roads we plan on, working on the next couple of fiscal years. Also, been repairing a lot of the potholes that pop up over the road because of the cold and wet conditions, Rock Springs Road, some of the state roads, and the springs, if any ways where, any of the pothole areas are issues, just let me know, and we'll get out there and fix them up.
I'll send you a list.
You want us to start now, or you want us to wait?
Anytime.
I'm just teasing. That rain's made a mess, hasn't it?
Yes, it has.
I'll tell you where there's one that's, it's not a pothole, it has to do with the road, if you're coming out of the event center and you're going to turn left like you're going to the memorial, it's where the, but it's a, yes, it's huge, it is a drop-off. I'm surprised we've not had somebody lose a tire up there, it's bad. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, it's a drain.
Yeah.
It's a drain.
Yeah, it's huge, so, I don't know that anything can be done, I just noticed it a couple of times, and the barrel kind of keeps moving.
Yes.
A little bit more, a little bit more.
Well, uh, we'll probably contact them, see what they say, see if they do something there.
I think about it as I pull out, but then, up there, and then I don't think about it anymore. Usually I'll make a phone call, then I don't, no.
We've done about that, we keep moving the barrel back to, people keep moving the barrel on us, so.
Okay, um, any questions for Todd? Steve?
Good evening. Rain has not slowed our workload down whatsoever, we are going at a frantic pace. We issued 26 new single-family dwelling permits last month, and issued 74 state residences for new families, 74 new families in Smyrna, that's on, more than two a day. And that is not to apartments, so that's just seeing a family welcome. Only other thing I'll mention is one of my inspectors today, we're not letting inspectors just pass his, one of his certification things, so I'm really proud of Brandon for that, and that's all.
Great. Questions for Steve? Mike?
Yes, ma'am, I'm usually free tonight. I didn't want to say, we've got a couple of our staff members doing the National Playground Safety Institute, trying to get their certification, I think Jim would be recertified, another staff member trying to get certified, so I know it's hard to believe that he'd be getting certified to inspect playgrounds, but there is a big deal. I can tell you, our staff is eager for spring, every day they get outside and get something done, it's a good day. Our spring seasons and tournaments are upon us, and they'll be starting here the next week or so, so be aware of that as you're riding around. I've been updating for months on all the projects, and I can tell you, just every dry day, humid, wet day, really, staff is out there ordering along with contractors, so I entertain any question, I haven't had any of them, still going through all of them, I don't know if you've seen that for months, but we're trying to wrap them up best we can, even on cold days, the sunshine's been welcome for us, we're transitioning to three different parks, so it's good to see some work in this field.
Questions for Mike? I noticed they were back at Zama Park today, so.
Yeah, I saw them down there, they're getting footage for the signals, I think.
Ms. Kathy?
Have the privilege of working on some of the things that Chief was talking about, so watch Channel 4 tonight. Would like to say thank you so much to Jason Anderson for sharing his time on camera. Right before this meeting, I was at PB, and Channel 4 came down and interviewed him for his role as a lead investigator in the mule kicker, mule kicking bandit. And so, and what I loved about Jason, that was a fun one, you all, what I loved about Jason is that, as Chief mentioned, that was a phenomenal cooperation between multiple agencies, and Jason did a beautiful job of representing Smyrna and extending that thanks to agencies that were involved, so pay attention to that, lots of, spent a lot of time down there the past couple of weeks, and have gotten a lot of your time telling the good work that's going on as cases are solved down there. We have currently, right now, about 10 PSAs and actually 130-minute program in production for Channel 3, so lots of work going on there, census video, PSA filming started today, so many of you will hear from us on that, we're excited about that. And just some PSAs as things come up, there'll be a road project PSA in the next couple of days, and, let's see, we're finalizing a media training for directors, and hopefully we'll roll that out to all personnel, just really feel like, now that I've been here for three or four months, that it's a great opportunity to share some tips and suggestions, and just a general training to folks on what to do when the media arrives and how to communicate.
Great. Questions for Kathy? Thanks. Kathy?
Yes, Mayor Counsel, I will touch on a couple of things, we do have planning commission next week, and we have another busy agenda. Kathy did mention the census PSA, just want to remind everyone, it's coming up soon, and please fill out your census and form, it's very important to count every one we can, because there's a lot of dollars that come to us based on our per capita basis, so. I also want to touch base on one other thing, was a part of a conference call last Friday with FEMA Region 4, FEMA is in the process of updating the flood maps, or several flood maps within the Stones River watershed, which obviously Smyrna is a part of, and so it looks like the majority of the panels in Smyrna will be updated. This is the very beginning of the process, so these maps won't actually be updated probably for a year and a half to two years, because they, but we are going to have public meetings, one in Murfreesboro, one in Smyrna, and one in Mount Juliet, coming up March 31st, 1st, 2nd, the one in Smyrna will be on April 1st, at the event center. For anyone who would like to see the new maps, that may be affected by the maps, could certainly come in, FEMA will be handling that meeting and doing all the work with that meeting, but we will be holding it here in Smyrna. They also gave us a tool that is very powerful, I think, because it's an actual GIS layer, which shows us exactly what's being proposed to be changed, both positive, meaning coming out of the floodplain, and, and a negative way of coming, going into the floodplain, potentially. And so we're going to be overlaying that on our parcel data and actually formally notifying all those property owners about the, so they can come in and actually see it for themselves, talk to FEMA about what that means for them from an insurance standpoint and all those things, so we will be working on that. Again, the meeting was, well, from 4:00 to 7:00 on April 1st. And again, there's one in Murfreesboro on Tuesday, the 31st, and one in Mount Juliet on Thursday, this April 2nd. You can come to any of those meetings if that April 1st date doesn't work for you, you can go anywhere, you don't have to come to Smyrna, if you live in Smyrna.
Great. Questions for Kathy? Steve?
Mayor Counsel, I'll just update you on a couple of things, put in the weekly report, we are in full swing hiring our seasonal folks for the Parks Department, got quite a few lifeguards and gatehouse clerks and other positions that we're hiring for them. We are also close to wrapping up our annual benefit statement that goes out to all employees, that should be coming out next week. And then, if folks would mark their calendars, we've booked our annual charity golf scramble for May 15th, it's a Friday, May 15th, so give people plenty of time to get a team together. We're actually, the event has grown so much, we're going to do two tournaments that day, a morning tournament, that'll tee off at 7:30, and then another afternoon, that will tee off at 1:00. So we're excited about that event as well, and planning is in full swing for that. That's all I got.
Don't put us in the morning, Tom. Right, H.
She said, "I can't tee off at 7:30," I said, "You can't tee off anyway."
Steve, you gonna get out and practice a little bit?
I don't need to.
Maybe you can beat our team?
I don't need to. I think you're safe.
I'm pretty cool, I'm good.
What day did you say?
It's May 15th, Friday, May 15th.
Okay. Okay. Got it. Any questions for Jeff? Okay. Rex?
Most of our time's been devoted to working on the budget, we're currently in the phase of developing the five-year capital improvements plan, and we're progressing along very well.
So, I was looking at the sales tax comparison, because we have the January numbers, which would have been the December sales, right?
Mm-hmm.
And it looked like it was up about 6% on the local from December of last year.
Yeah, would you like me to hit both of those?
That'd be great.
Okay. Local sales tax, we received $1,670,399. That gives us a $504,000 year-to-date surplus on the state shared tax. We received $639,967, and that gives us a $217,707 year-to-date surplus, so December really helps us out, Christmas.
Well, we always talk about how important it is to shop local.
Shop local. Take it up.
Rocky, he's even got you doing it, I didn't know people paying attention, I didn't want to miss the opportunity.
I was just looking at the comparisons from previous years, and, I mean, we're steadily growing, as, as, we should, along with our population growing and, and the.
And more businesses.
And more people shopping.
Forty-four business licenses a month average coming through, sorry.
That's right.
Right, Diane?
Well, not quite this month. It's a short month.
We got an extra day.
That's right. Any questions for Rex? Thanks, Rex. Mike?
Yes, ma'am, the $18 million SRF loan goes to the TLDA Board for approval on March 6th, so remember, that's 1.3%, 30-year, it's good timing, because we've exhausted the original $3 million loan at the wastewater plant. Also, we've been waiting on a letter from the Corps for the Jefferson Pike project, stating that the utilities did not need a separate easement for the project, so we received that yet today. So we have sent that to Ms. Emily, and she's forwarded that on to SRF, so the funding for that should start moving forward as well.
Questions for Mike? Thanks. Chief?
Mayor Counsel, we're happy to announce that Tuesday, we started our first set of life safety inspections here in the town. We have nine Level 1 fire inspectors that have passed the class, but they are waiting to be recognized by the state of Tennessee, but it shouldn't take long for that to happen. But we had four new, new people out this week, and ready to start.
Chief, what does that kind of consist of, what's that role entail?
It'll, it's similar to our pre-fire inspections, but we're looking at it a little more in-depth, we're checking your exit lightings, are we blocking the lighting, I mean, the exit doors, we're looking at the electrical panel, we're just going a little more in-depth with the inspection itself, sir.
That's one of the things that we looked at in moving some of the workload from the codes department over to the fire department on the fire codes. We saw a lot of, the chief would go out on a fire call, or what could be a fire call, and find out, you know, it's a belt on a heat and air unit that needs to be replaced, but while he's there, he sees five code violations, he'd have to come back, call the codes department, have the codes department go back to this, especially on the commercial businesses, well, now, while they're there, they can go ahead and proceed, so basically, the fire department and the, and the codes department be working together with the fire department, doing all of the fire codes on all new installations of institutional, institutional, industrial, and commercial, and then they'll be doing the yearly follow-ups that they've done in the past, and tying to that, the expanded codes violation enforcement.
And one of our, one of our goals, I hope, to me, is that we'll have an inspector on duty every day of the week, 365 years.
I think this was something we talked about at the retreat last year, and that's how we kind of.
That's how we got here.
Yeah. Great. Other questions for Chief? Ms. Diane?
Well, so far today, we've issued 33 licenses, but I want to share with you, Joey Galian told me that she had met a family today that had moved to Smyrna from San Francisco. They do not have any family here, they just chose us to relocate, and I thought that was special.
I always find it interesting, I always want to know, what made you choose us?
And that's what she said, she said, because of the conditions in California, they just were wanting to relocate, and they, I don't know if they, on the map, they put their finger on us or whatever, but they're here.
Well, we're glad to have them.
Yes.
The South is attractive, and to a lot of those families, I know from what I do, we're seeing more and more people from like the west coast part of our country relocating into the southern regions here, we're getting some of those, so.
I saw a report yesterday that Nashville is the number-two job market in the country, so that's, I'm sure, playing a, playing a role in that.
Well, keep in mind, when you see things like that, and they talk about the Nashville, they're really talking about the MSA.
Right.
Which includes us, Williamson County, Wilson County, Sumner County, and some of those others, so there's no doubt it has not slowed down.
Other questions for Ms. Diane? Thanks. Ron?
Yes, Mayor Counsel, I do have a couple of things, very quickly, I'm not sure if we have something to go up on the screen, but the Easter Sunday buffet is upon us, that is April the 12th, and it'll be held at the town center from 10:30 to 2:00, you need to make your reservations, you can do that by calling 615-459-4444. And then, the, the cost is $21.95 for adults, $12.95 for children, six and under, and children under five eat for free. If you've not been to the Mother's Day buffet or the Easter buffet, you have missed a true treat, and this is a great way to get the family out and enjoy a good meal, and not have to go home and clean up, you can go straight home and go to the couch, that's my, that's my motto, eat and go to the couch. So, it's a lot of fun, we want to make sure everybody knows about it, but you do need to get your reservations in, it'll fill up fast. Mayor, you did mention, Charles and I did spend about four hours this morning in Nashville, working with our T-Dot partnerships, had some really good meetings with engineering staff, talking about some of our existing projects, and just kind of checking up on some of the, the other projects that we've got going forward. As you know, we've been talking about that continuation of Enne Springs West all the way over to McEwen with the other jurisdictions, we brought them up to speed on some of those things that we're looking at. We've talked about Ammerville Road, we talked about the interchanges at Sam Ridley and Ammerville, and, and of course, we did talk about the long-term plan for that interchange at Rock Springs Road that we'd all love to see at some point, and we had really good conversations. Rocky Fork, I'm sorry, Rocky Fork.
We just didn't want to start any rumors.
Okay, Rocky Fork, Rocky Fork. Good catch, I was just saying if you was paying attention.
Okay.
That's what I was doing. But, you know, it's, it's one of those things, we have a great partnership with T-Dot, but it's about maintaining those relationships and working together, and that's what we talked about a lot today, so felt really good about our, our communications there. I know most of you, of the 6,250 subscriptions to the Tennessee Town and City newspaper, every politician gets this, I think, for free, I did want to point out, as you read, as I know you do, with bated breath, every week when you get these, there are three articles about Smyrna in there, thanks to our PIO, and I just wanted to show some appreciation for the work Kathy's doing in getting our good messages out in different venues. I do want to. I do want to, on a serious note, condolences to the Kevin Creed family and the loss of his father, who had been battling cancer. We, many of us were at the funeral home. I know that the family appreciated us coming by, but I know they also would have covered our prayers through this time as they still deal with the death of his father. So I want to give a shout out to our Parks and Rec Department and the Town Center for putting on a fabulous event, our Volunteer of the Year banquet. I know many of us were there Friday night. It was a great event. I also want to point out that our videographer, Brett Bogergard, with Channel Three here, and then also the Stewart's Creek Group again, they have filmed that. They're in the process of editing, editing that and going to get it out.
Went out today.
Went out today. So it's, it's actually on, I was in Nashville all day, so I didn't see Channel Three, but it went out today. It's a great event. Do want to show some appreciation for our Volunteer of the Year, Rusty Bogestie. I hope I said that right. Bogestie?
Bogestie.
Bogestie?
Bogust.
Okay. He was the winner of the Kenneth Coon Victory Lifetime Service Award. He works, I think, a lot in our soccer program. And then the Youth of the Year, Brianna Evans, was our Youth Leader Award. And that's a real special award for this young lady because it also comes associated with a $500 scholarship from Sima. And I know that's going to be something she's going to appreciate much as she goes forward with her education.
Shop local.
Shop local. And then also, we had several other awards. I won't go into the whole list of our youth athletes and the volunteers that were recognized. It's just so much fun to come together and see, you know, these volunteers putting their time and effort and investing in our young folks through our parks and the quality of life that we provide. And, you know, we, we get caught up sometimes on the budget and all those things, but when you see the outcomes, and I think we had close to 200 people there Friday night, recognizing a lot of those as volunteers and, and athletes. So thank you so much. The last thing I wanted to put on the agenda tonight was, and everybody, I think Mark mentioned it in his prayer, but the coronavirus, it's something that's on a lot of people's minds as we watch the world and, and dealing with this disease or virus that's going around. We've had some people contact us here at the town, you know, what are our plans? What are we doing? I just want to go on record to say, well, our position is, the town of Smyrna is not in the medical business. So from a standpoint of actually having a physical plan to deal with coronavirus is not really in our wheelhouse. But what we are doing is we're staying in touch. Kathy and I, and I know Chief has done some research and, and having some conversations with people that we interface with in the medical field. We have an MOU in place with Stonecrest Hospital in case there is need for overflow at our Town Center and things like that. We're just making sure all those documents are in place and we're ready to, to move forward if we need to. What we will do is kind of be in a mode of, of support, whether it's space, whether it's getting information out through Channel Three or through our social media, those type of things. So the CDC and the Health Department and the medical field is really the, the driver on this. We're just going to be there in that support role. So just wanted everybody to know, we, we're doing all we can to keep abreast of what's going on with this, this situation, whether it becomes an epidemic or, or whatever in the future. We just, our, our role will be to be in a support role. So just wanted to put that out there and let everybody know we are looking at it. We are just as anxious as most everybody. I know Kathy's got a child studying abroad. And, you know, we've got the Sister City program this year with our students supposed to come over from Japan. I think it was announced today that the Japanese schools are closed now until 1st of April, those kind of things. So we're going to be monitoring all those things and how they affect us. But our major role will be that of support. So that's all I have.
Questions for Brian? Jeffrey L?
We're in the, in the heat of the olive branch of acquiring the, the properties. Brian has been gracing up to assist me in interviewing for the attorney position. So that's, we've done quite a few of those. And I'm anxious to be hiring someone soon. I can feel the, the pain of working for two, as two people. So... Why is everybody laughing?
Hey, we feel your pain too.
We were just talking about the giant sucking sound coming from your office. I don't even know what it is.
It's a vortex.
But he had time to get a nice haircut.
Yes.
How about Dennis and Minnis haircut?
They, they cut a little too much.
I think it looks very nice.
When you're short-staffed, you have to have short hair.
Makes me more dynamic.
They get nice with the gel in it.
High-speed, low-waist.
Yes, yes. High, high-dollar hair. But I did attend the Tennessee Municipal Attorney's Association Conference today in Brentwood. And I came back on two wheels to make it for the council. And then I'll be back in the morning with that. It's our winter conference, is what they call it. But a lot of great information that we do get out of there. And it's a great networking event as well. But we obtain our continuing legal education through that mechanism. And that's all I have.
You know, so many times going to meetings like that, it shows me how good we have it here in the town with some of the things that are taking place in some of the other communities.
Well, and likewise, because there's a lot of stories that the attorneys tell about the councils that they're dealing with. And I, I feel very lucky that we, I don't have to deal with a lot of problems that they do. So I'm, I'm grateful for y'all.
Great. His evaluation is coming up.
Give him his moment, Mayor. If there's a section on praising the council, he gets a...
Well, I've sent you, I've sent you examples of how it can go.
Oh, any questions for Jeff? Raquel?
I would just like to say congratulations to all of this year's award winners from the banquet. And also to echo what Mr. King said about the ML King Leadership Academy of Rutherford County Career Fair, we had Mr. King, as well as Officer Mitchell, participate in that. And I also would like to thank Kathy and Brian for helping to organize that. I think a lot of good information was shared. And there were at least, at least 30 to 40 students there. And there were about, about 20 different careers. And actually, Mr. King, there were actually, there was an electrical engineer, a mechanical engineer, and a civil, civil engineer. So we, we had all the bases covered there. So I just think that was a, a good showing and glad that Smyrna could participate in the program.
Great. And that's it for me. Thanks. Raquel? Oh, I'm sorry, HG, sorry.
As Raquel said, congratulations to all, to Rusty, Brianna, and all the rest of the volunteers from the banquet last week. Volunteers is what makes, one of the things which makes our community very special and brings us together. And Brian, speaking of Sima, the Smyrna Independent Merchants Association, Shop Local, we had our monthly meeting this past Tuesday, and we were graced by the presence of our mayor. She gave us a state-of-the-town address and did a very good job, Mayor.
Thank you.
And I'm also going to say that I think that, you know, when you sit and you watch this presentation, it really, it, it gives you a, a good feeling that all of you folks out there are doing your jobs and that Smyrna is really a great place to live. And it just reinforces those facts.
I think sometimes we get bogged down in the day-to-day meetings or the meetings we do on a monthly basis. And we forget over a year's time, what all has taken place.
Well, we spent so many years, not, not so many years, but a, a long period of time looking at this project which is coming, this project which is coming, and this project is, which is coming. It's like, you know, all of these things are coming true now. And we see them all coming to fruition. Of course, you know, here coming with the, the, the rest of the Jefferson Pike coming online, also the Sam Ridley Parkway coming online. Brian and I were talking about that today. And it's like, it's going to be a little difficult while those projects are being done. But, you know, we're just, we're going to have to be patient about that. But the results at the end should be well worth it.
Great. Anything else?
Yes. You know, talking about people moving to Smyrna, y'all have heard me say, recently, my daughter and her husband and two kids moved back to Smyrna. And they, you know, have been to the SOAC and they're really enjoying that. They can't wait for the, for the summertime. But next week is a big week for their family. All, oh, we have that off. There's four of them, but three out of the four have birthdays next week.
Wow.
So Mary Holland's birthday will be the 7th. Her daddy's will be the 8th. And then the little brother, Fenton's, will be the 13th. We're going to have a party.
There you go.
And that's it.
Very good. Thanks. Jerry?
Oh, hello to my mother. She's watching from the floor.
There you go.
Say hi, Mom.
Hi, Mom.
I echo also the, the comments been made about the, the banquet. There was the Event Center, Parks Group, Chief, your guys, they all did a fantastic job. And it just, I always look so forward going to that every year. And just to see the number of people that come out and, and see those that, that work so hard and, and volunteer. We were laughing a little bit. My son, Trenton, helped coach one of the football teams and they didn't win a game. And, but I sent him a note that I'm surprised you didn't get Coach of the Year. So... But we had a little fun with that. But also, we want to say thank you. We had the, the Sister City had their major fundraiser this past weekend with the chili supper. Final numbers were not in, but it was very, very successful. And I'd just like to thank those that, the sponsors, those that provided food, those that brought baskets to be donated or purchased, and those that worked. And just the community for coming out and giving us such a great support. And so we are blessed to live in a fantastic community that, that really, that wants to be a part. And so we are, we are blessed. Thank you.
Jerry, can you tell that that was the, the highest-attended one so far? It seems to me it was really crowded the whole time.
Yeah, the, we think it is. The numbers, the final numbers look, as far as the, what came in, certainly looks to be the biggest one.
Yeah.
I know we, they had the, the baskets that we were, that people were bidding on. And my wife and son, they, they bid on several, and then they left. And guess who had to pay for them? They won everyone they bid on.
He may not be a very good coach, but he's pretty smart, it sounds like.
No, that was the other one.
Maybe he needs to be a coach.
There you go.
Just a couple of things. Obviously, Volunteer of the Year banquet, I think this was my 14th or 15th year to be involved in that banquet at some point. And it's always the hi, highlight. It's one of the events that the Parks, Parks Department puts on that's kind of a highlight of the year. So good job, Mike. Your staff did a great job. We didn't mention the chef, but anytime you can get a free meal from the chef, hey, you know, I'm going to be down there. It was really good. The chef keeps outdoing himself every time. So very good, very good event and very enjoyable. This year, for the first time, I think, my mom and dad were in attendance. My dad sat through the whole thing without grumbling, which is amazing. But, yeah, it was, it was a good event.
What was in that white chocolate caramel?
Caramel, white chocolate.
Cobbler, what was that?
I don't know, but my blood sugar was high the next day.
That stuff was yummy.
Yeah.
Hey, the, the blackberry cobbler, I had to get a little bit of both, so we can imagine what my blood sugar did too. But the blackberry cobbler was over the top also. I mean, that...
That's my favorite.
They were great.
Very good.
Actually, the whole meal, just like you said, the whole meal was terrific.
And then one small public service announcement. Time change, March 8th, so one week from Sunday, we will be springing forwards. The next time we meet, we'll be on daylight savings time. It's my favorite time of the year. I hate the winter. Can't wait for it to end. I don't like getting dark. It's been dark outside for an hour and a half. I'm ready for summer. So don't forget March 8th.
Great. Mark?
Yeah, same thing. Congratulations to Brianna and to Rusty. Yeah, I took the time just to try to catch them both before it was over with and done, before everybody left. And Brianna, I didn't know at all. And just to be able to go up and talk to her and her parents, you can see why she was chosen. That's a sharp young lady right there. She's a future leader for sure.
Do you know where I got to know her? She would make the shakes at Steak 'n Shake was the first time that I got to know her. I think she was there the night that we went, that we went. So, yeah, nice young lady.
She's a very nice young lady. Looks like she's got her head screwed on right and does a lot for, at school. She's involved in a lot. So it's a good choice.
She also has a lot of hair. I did notice that.
Yeah.
She had a head full of hair.
Yeah.
Jealous?
Yeah. Mine's falling out. She's collecting it apparently.
HG mentioned having the mayor come and speak to Sima with the state of the city, state of the town PowerPoint presentation. We kept her and I kept Brian busy that same morning before they came to you. They got to practice over at Parks where I work. And I asked them to, to come by and give that same presentation. So I thanked them both personally, but I want to thank them publicly for doing that. It goes a long way. I can't tell you how, we had a room full of people. And there were some even outside the room, couldn't get in. Standing room only for you two. They hear me talk about it all the time. But for you guys to come in and present that in the way you did, a lot of thank yous came from that and a lot of great comments. So you spent the day being ambassadors for the town, it sounds like. And I appreciate that. The Lowry revitalization's kind of been brought up a little bit in, in that state of the town it was as well. Kind of excited about that. There's some cool things coming that is going to dress up our downtown area. Little by little, we're getting there. And some streetscaping, lamp posts and things like that that are on the way. And I'm, it's Sima Park. I'm just kind of, after all these years, HG, we're talking about things that just take a while to progress. And after all these years, I think we're starting to see the life there on Lowry Street begin to progress. So I'm pretty excited about that. It's something we all want to see done. Kathy, thank you for being at the Chili, Sister City Chili function. I, I don't know who all made it or didn't. I did run into Jerry while I was there. And I know some of you guys were committed to other events that same evening and so forth. But Kathy did a Facebook Live presentation and really, was really working the whole time she was there. But did a great job. Appreciate you doing that. I had one other thing. And I, oh, this is kind of off, off the beaten path. But I get to thinking about our teachers a lot. And, you know, we got a room full of people who are either married to teachers or have been teachers or retired teachers. And Pam worked in the school system. My wife works in the school system and...
We all had teachers.
Were you all teachers?
I am a teacher.
You are a teacher?
I am a teacher.
Okay, that's right, you are. So you think about some, including you. So you think about all these teacher roles that people play. And now we're winding down, believe it or not, we're winding down another school season. And so now here comes all the testing and all the things that everybody just funnels into. Rush, 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 rush. Well, thank you, teachers, because all of you that do this and participate in helping raise our young people up, it's a gift. It's a job that, I tell Connie, I said, "I don't know how you do it." I, I couldn't do it. But there are many that do and have the gift of doing that. So we're not at the end of the school season yet, but believe it or not, we're already ramping up to get to the end of another school season. So just want to thank everybody affiliated with teaching kids, now, past, or present, or future. Thank you for doing that and investing in our young people. That's all.
Great. Couple of items. First of all, the summer camp registration is now open for members of the SOAC. And we'll open up to everyone on March the 9th. There will be half-day camps as well as full-day camps. And you can check those out on, I'm assuming, the town website. If you want to get involved in your community, you can do that by serving on one of the town boards or committees. Applications must be in by March the 9th. And you can fill out an application online or by contacting Tiffany Lawson here at Smyrna Town Hall. Don't forget, next Tuesday is Super Tuesday, March the 3rd. If you've not yet cast your vote, you will be able to do that on Tuesday. And remember, you now can go to any polling location. You do not have to go to an assigned location. You can go anywhere across the county. The 2020 Top Gun Night Run, the date for the run is scheduled for Friday, May 29th at 8:00 PM. Registration is now open. We have, how many did I say?
Ninety.
Ninety. So we have 90 registered as of now. I will tell you, we have filled all of our top sponsorships. We now have sponsorships at $1,000 and below. Council, if there is anybody that you know of that might be interested in sponsoring at $1,000 or below $1,000, gets you on the T-shirt. If you would please get in touch with... get in touch with them, and if they're interested, then you can give their name and contact information to Tiffany. We are expecting an even bigger crowd this year, we've added on a hundred and fifty to what our amount was last year in regards to, isn't that right, a hundred and fifty? For a number of runners, so it is a family-friendly event, and we invite you all out to attend. Since we last met, I have gotten to meet with Cub Scout Pack Eight Forty-Two, that met at Cornerstone Baptist Church, enjoyed meeting with those young men and their families. That pack did not have any girls in it, but I will tell you, one young man stood up, raised his hand, and wanted to know when the road to his school was going to be finished, and I said, we all want to know that, too. But I looked to see, and he was not with the parents, so it was not as if the parent had put him up to that, but he was very curious to know, so.
They practiced it the night before.
That's right, that's exactly right.
They can stop waiting, or get a big tarp.
There you go, there you go. Congratulations to Stewart's Creek High School Cheerleaders that represented us in Orlando, Florida, I got to go out and present them with some certificates last week, and what great ambassadors for our community. Kudos to everybody involved in the Lifetime Service Awards. I think sometimes we forget all of the time and effort that the Parks Department puts in, looking at programs, and tickets, and decorations on the table. Not only do you see them doing that, but then you see them afterwards waiting to clean up after the event, so it is definitely a team effort, and Mike, we appreciate your staff, as well as the Event Center staff. Saturday, I got to attend an event for Zachary Taylor, who had earned his Eagle Scout, do you call it a badge, or is it an Eagle Scout Award? Not sure the correct terminology. Rank? Eagle Scout, so I guess nobody has received theirs in this room, is what y'all are saying to me. Eagle Scout rank, okay. And we actually went to school with his mother, so, but, so congratulations to Zachary.
He's been in here before, and done the pledge, or something.
I think he has, I think he has. Mark, thanks for having us, Brian and I, out to Parks. You know, one of the things that we always talk about when we talk to groups is communication, how important communication is, and how important accurate communication is. I think we all know, just because you read it on Facebook, doesn't mean that it's accurate or true, and we made sure to let those realtors know, and that, so they could go out and help spread the word of what great things are going on in the town of Smyrna. HG, thanks for having me, and thank you, dear and your group, for having me to SAMA, I always enjoy getting out, and talking to individuals in the community, and hearing what they have to think, so.
Dare I say it again, shop local?
That's right, shop local. Okay, anything else? If there's nothing else, then we are adjourned.